Uh, Mr. Prisco as the, I suppose, acting clerk?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Mr. Prisco's temporary acting, or acting clerk.
Can I second that? I guess I have to.
Well, maybe he can.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You get the fold in there?
Unanimous.
I do.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Prisco, legal bills for December 2012.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for December 2012 in the amount of $7,805.65 as following. Copeland Page PC General, $7,067.65. Copeland Page PC Labor, $738 for a total of $7,805.65.
Second?
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone here for public comment? Okay. Nice. Well, I think Mr. O'Leary was going to deal with the item four, appointments, reappointments of the Fourth of July Committee. We can skip over that. We have Mrs. Stats here to discuss item five, pending legislation relative to special election for U.S. Senate. And just to give the public a little insight, the governor has passed, I don't know, an act or a resolve that would allow communities that have their town elections that are scheduled within thirty days, either prior or post the primary election for U.S. Senate, to join those elections together. And that's why we asked Mrs. Stats to come here and educate us and brief us and give us her opinion as to whether or not it's something that we should or could do.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And as you said, Mr. Delaney, this did pass. It's, uh, chapter two of the Acts of 2013, so it's hot off the presses and it is in effect. It, it, as it works out, you know, our town election is on May 7th, scheduled per the charter. And the special act or the, the act does allow for municipalities whose municipal elections fall within thirty days of one of these two special state elections to change the date of their municipal election to coincide with one of those elections, barring any charter provision or general bylaw. So that overrides the charter in this occasion. I want to just, at the outset, I will say that, you know, I think it's an opportunity we probably need to embrace, you know, because it is cost savings to the town no matter what. But I want to stress to everybody that what we're doing here under this act, we're not combining two elections into one. We are holding two separate elections on the same day. So we would be running two elections concurrently. Each election will have its own special requirements because they are of a different animal, so to speak. A town election and a state primary. Voters who show up at the polls would be able to vote in one, either of these two elections or both of them. They, there will be separate election workers required to man each election, separate voting lists for each election, and separate warrants issued and posted for each election. So they are two separate elections. In, in total, you know, they're just going to be run on the same day. There are challenges that we're going to face, and I've talked to all but one of my key election officials, the election wardens and clerks today, to run this by them because they will be quite involved with this too. We have a lot of paperwork that's required for every election, especially post the election. You know, we do have reports to make to the Secretary of State's office, the Elections Division, and we have to make sure that we keep all of that in order. If, in this case, we have all of our precincts in one location. So one of our challenges here is space. We are confined within the hall, and anybody who's been in there knows that there's no room for expansion. Ideally, we would like to have separate check-in tables and checkout tables to keep everything separate, but that won't happen here. So we'll make arrangements to make sure that it's very noticeable what the different stations are. It will make it a crowded condition for both the workers and the voters. So we'll have to do a lot of pre-publicity, get people in tune to this, to what to expect if you should vote to do this. There are people, as I said, that will approach the check-in areas to ask for maybe just one of the election ballots and bypass the other ones. My election workers will have to be quite in tune to which station they're covering and which ballot is being requested because the proper voting lists have to be marked. Each election also has different eligibility requirements, so that's another consideration. The voting lists won't be identical because, as I said, there's different conditions that exist for a town election versus a primary election. Some voters will be eligible for the town but not the primary, and that will be every registered voter regardless of party or political designation affiliation. So you could have Green Rainbow persons registered in that party, Libertarians, and there's a handful of other affiliations that people are registered in. In a municipal election or a state election where there are no different ballots, all registered voters can vote. But in a primary, you have to be registered in the two, in the political parties that are in effect at that time. Last year, we had three at the state election. It was Democrat, Republican, and Green Rainbow. The Green Rainbow Party, having failed to achieve a 3% vote cast in the state election, now reverts back to a political designation status, so they don't have political party status. So we would just have two political parties ballots, the Democrat and the Republican. So Democrats, Republicans, and unenrolled persons are the ones that can vote in a primary and not any other persons who are in other minor party affiliations. In addition, a state primary and a state election allows that a person who has moved out of town within the last six months and not registered in another location does have the right to come back to vote in their previous community. It forgives them six months of delaying registering to vote in their new community, and if they were so inclined to vote in a state election, it gives them that opportunity versus a town resident who moved out of town in that same timeframe and has acknowledged that they do not have the right to come back and vote. So, in a town election. So there's, there's the two different regular voting lists. And also, if anybody, I know you gentlemen have never done this, but some of our voters don't return their census forms and end up in our inactive list. There would be two inactive lists also. And again, those would be different depending on the party affiliation and the election. Separate ballots will be issued for each election. The town will be responsible for the town ballot, and the state would be responsible for the Democratic and Republican primary ballots. The town would still pay for printing and programming costs for their election, and the state would pay for the primary ballots and program, programming costs affiliated with that election. Certainly, the advantages are voter convenience, to do two elections in one day and not have to come back the following week. There would be one voter registration deadline because all elections fall under the same voter registration deadline of twenty days prior to an election, so that is the same. When it comes to absentee ballots, it would give us the opportunity to send them out together with separate inner envelopes for their return, well-marked with stickers. We've been through a similar situation, running two elections one week apart, where we had to really differentiate all of these details. And, and it was successful with, I think, one exception of a person putting the wrong ballot in, in the wrong envelope. The voting machines, both the regular AccuGo tabulators and the handicap machines, can be programmed to accept both, both ballots for this election. They will tabulate the results separately. The ballot count on the front of the machine will indicate how many ballots have run through, so that won't give you an indication of how many people voted in each election. It would show up on the tape that comes out at the end. Another advantage, of course, is pre-election setup. That's one time for my office and for the DPW crew. And my election worker fatigue, you know, to do two elections in, within a week is, is a hard day. You know, they, they are mostly in the retired community, and several of them work all day, some still part day, but it is, it is, does take its toll on you. I would estimate the savings to the town at a cost of approximately two-thirds of the cost of the town election. And again, that's because we still would have certain costs that we have to cover, such as, I said, the programming costs, the ballot printing costs. I would be, uh, we would be saving in areas like the police details. However, in an election where we have two ballots, I would be using an extra detail to help keep that separated inside. So a lot, there would be a savings, you know, minus, say, one detail extra coming in. So there's still a cost savings to that. So those are all pluses. Historically, for the town, no offense, gentlemen, but unless there's a ballot question on the municipal ballot, we've had pretty low attendance at town elections.
Not much of a draw.
Yeah.
Especially this year.
Well...
True that.
The deadline for taking up nomination papers isn't over yet, so that's yet to be determined, Mr. Delaney. If there's a ballot question, that's a different issue, then, then definitely voter interest is increased. And in addition, state primaries are generally a low-volume election. You know, one of the lowest volume was in 2004. We had only 5.6% voter turnout, which is very, very low. The special primary will definitely spike some interest, you know, in this race, but it doesn't appear to be on the same track as the Coakley-Brown special primary three years ago. In that primary, we had a 23% voter turnout.
Was it the primary?
That wasn't the primary.
At the primary. At the election in January, we had 64% turnout. Totally different. Yeah. Some of the other special considerations, we'll have to have, you know, certainly a extra training session for the election workers so that everyone can wrap their heads around the, the need to maintain the different elections, the different voting lists, the detail to the inactive list, and the ballots that are given out. We would need to utilize the maximum number of election workers and probably ask some who currently work half-days to work the whole days. Because they're run as two separate elections, ideally, you would want the same staffing that you have on a regular election, which is two check-in workers and two checkout workers. That's probably something we won't be able to, to do because we'll be utilizing everybody for maintaining a separate election voting list. Go ahead, Paul.
Barbara, would you kind of walk through? Let's say I'm an independent voter, and I'm going to vote in the town election, and then I'm going to choose Republican or Democrat.
Okay.
What are the steps that an individual voter is going to have to go through, walking through from the time they enter until the time they leave?
Okay.
Could you kind of outline that?
Sure. As I envision it now, you know, when I'm trying to think this out in anticipation that you would approve this, if you're familiar with the tables at St. Teresa's, they're quite long, you know, so we would put a divider in the middle of the table, something like the caution tape that I use for the plastic chain link fence that separates the two precincts, something that stands out. I would be purchasing some kind of a, a high sign that'll sit on the table. One would say town election check-in, state primary check-in, something to that effect, to really point people to the right check-in area ahead of, you know, not, not a table plaque that's low and they can't see, but something that will stand up higher. So a person would come in and they would check in to the, the town check-in list is the one I would probably designate first. And then there will be, I anticipate having a separate ballot clerk, a person to hand out the ballots with each check-in worker. And that way, they are responsible for only their set of ballots. So a person would check into the town election voting list, receive their ballot there. Then they would just take two side steps further, check in with the state primary voting list person. If they're unenrolled, they have to declare if they want a Democrat or a Republican ballot. The ballot clerk will give them that ballot. The voter then would go to the voting booth, mark both ballots, and then go proceed to the checkout table. And these, these check-in and checkout are required by law, so it's not like you can get rid of the checkout table. Again, it would be in the same order, town election, state primary. So a person would go to the town election checker, have them check them off on the checkout list, proceed two steps sideways further to the state primary check-in or checkout worker, and they have to declare what ballot they took because the in and the out lists have to match. And then they would deposit both ballots in the tabulator one at a time in any order. That doesn't matter. And that's it. So...
So the one ballot box will come?
One ballot box can be programmed, whether it's the regular tabulator or the handicap machine will mark the ballots accordingly, whichever ballot it will be. Yep. We would have to pay for our portion of the programming costs, and the state would cover there, so that would be a shared expense.
Just a, an observation.
Yeah.
When I've gone into vote, the individual that's checking me in, for starters, is thumbing through the street list.
Mm-hmm.
And one person may be better at it than the next. So that person gives me my ballot, I go to the next one, and the next one's slow. Right? Now we've got a very short, you know, we don't have a lot of queuing space.
Right. That's true.
Which is something that...
We have no options here because the polling place has to be contained within the church hall. We can't spill it out into the foyer. The foyer is the entrance and exit way. The ballots have to be secured within the polling environment, so we can't have ballots out in the foyer where the public is walking through. So that is a consideration. We can't eliminate any voting booths, you know, to make room for other tables. We need all of the voting booths that we have, which we're still, we're not set up for the maximum that we should have because there's just no room.
I guess light turnout is good.
Well, that's, that's, that's one of the...
You're not encouraging it.
Selling points to this, I guess you could say, as they're both anticipated to be fairly light.
I think history sort of tells the story.
Fairly light elections. Does everyone understand that scenario?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
There we go.
We'd have to do a lot of outreach to the public, you know, to get them prepared for this, so there'd be items in the transcript on patch, cable, the website, you know, whatever we can, we can get out there. At the polls, I would intend to have some sort of instruction cards posted or even hand it out to people, just a slip to keep recirculating, telling them the steps to take. And, you know, then leave the card there and we'll recirculate it at the beginning. Just basic bullet points, you know, steps to go. After we close the polls, it would take a little extra time because the police officers are the ones in charge of the ballots. They're the only ones that handle them, or during the course of the day if we felt that the ballot box became full. And at that time, the ballots do have to be separated into separate containers. Town election ballots have a different length of, of requirement to maintain versus a state election or primary. We don't, we will not have any write-ins, obviously, for, well, no, I'm sorry. We would have write-ins possibly for both elections. So that would take time too because they could only go through that one election at a time. So those are some of the things after the polls close. Funding. The auditor Suzanne Bump was at a conference that I was at last week, and as you know, she, the auditor's office oversees the Division of Local Mandates. And three years ago, with the Scott Brown, Martha Coakley elections, our association wrote to the auditor's office to get a ruling if this was, if that, those elections were considered to be unfunded mandates. And they were. They determined that they were, and the state was required to reimburse all of the communities in Massachusetts for the cost of those two elections. She has taken the, the step right now before being asked to write a letter to the governor and state that the auditor's position is the same, that, you know, the precedent was set, you know, the determination was made three years ago that this constitutes a local mandate, an unfunded local mandate, and as such, the state is required to pay for that. And one of the things that she even stated in her letter was that all unfunded local mandates are supposed to be paid at the time that the mandate is issued and not to be reimbursed later. So that is the stand of the auditor's office. I would imagine that we would see funding coming forward for these elections, so they should not be a cost to the town. She estimated, it was somewhere just under $8 million for a cost two, three years ago for the two elections, and she added a 5% increase to that and requested something over $8 million for the funding for these two. So that's, that's it in a nutshell.
Mr. Prisco?
Kind of a petty question, but can we get "I voted" stickers funded by the state?
No. No. They won't pay for that. They won't pay for certain things that are not required as part of the election process. I would like to say something about the "I voted" stickers. They are a nice thing to see. I agree, and we've had them for a number of years. But many of them land on other areas. They don't walk out the doors. They are pasted on the windows at St. Teresa's, they're pasted on all of our signs that we have to replace because I have, and if I was making my budget presentation, I was going to bring you some signs where you can see there's layers and layers and layers of "I voted" stickers. They, they go on places where we feel responsible to peel them off. We don't want to leave them at the church. You know, if it was the town signs and all, well, we'd bring them in here and dispose of them. But unfortunately, so many people have really just improperly disposed of them instead of just walking out and not taking one, that I feel compelled to have stopped doing it. It's a cost to the town, a minimal cost, but it's also just that I don't feel that St. Teresa's should be burdened with peeling off our "I voted" stickers. So that's more of the, the reason.
I have one more question. How will the absentee ballots now work for the April 30th special election, or primary? So what would be the date for absentee ballots?
Say it again, Mr.?
Absentee ballots?
Absentee ballots for that date? They would be available in our office three weeks ahead. All absentee ballots have to be available in the clerk's office no less than three weeks ahead.
And includes the town election as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Stevens?
Can you color-code the ballots of this separation process?
Yes, they will be. The, the state will designate the, the Democrats and Republicans with a red and blue header as they always do, and the town will have a different color.
So it'll be easy to separate?
Exactly. Oh, yeah, it is all color-coded. We do a lot of color coding during situations like this, even for the absentee ballots envelopes that get mailed out, that are the secrecy envelopes that come back to us. We put, you know, simple file folders, labels that are red or blue or whatever color we, we have, and we, you know, put, you know, the, identify what it is, but we use color a lot, you know, to draw the voters' eyes to it. Instructions would get sent out to absentee voters in, on colored paper. There's a lot of things that we would do in that fashion.
So on the absentee ballot, they have to mail them both back separately in two different envelopes?
They, they can return them in the same outer envelope, sealed inside, signed an affidavit in separate envelopes within. So, and that'll be explained in, it'll be a little extra postage cost because there would be an additional ballot and envelope coming back as well as going out, but it, it can be done together. We would anticipate anybody who requests two ballots will send them back together as well.
Thank you. Mr. O'Leary? Savings, two-thirds of the cost of the town election, which is...
Approximately, I would say, $7,000 to $7,500.
Save.
Savings, savings. The election runs about $10,000.
And you also mentioned an extra detail inside?
Yeah.
Why?
Because we do have to separate these ballots. One officer handling four precincts is a lot. If the ballot boxes fill up during the course of the day, and sometimes they just fill up because the ballots aren't falling correctly, the ballot box isn't even full, but that has to be opened by the police officer. At that time, they can separate them out into separate receptacles, seal them and, and maintain them, but they are handled by the police officer. He also transports the ballots to the polls and brings them all back. So there will be different cartons for used and unused town ballots as well as state primary ballots.
Yeah, I know the difference. When you talk about double the number of ballots based upon the level of participation, but realistically, maybe 25% participation level, meaning double what you normally have. If you would have an election with a 35, 40% participation level, you'd still have one officer, right?
You know, as, since we've been in this location, I have found the need to have two officers in there because of their duties. They have to be available to the election workers. They have to maintain, as I said, the ballots if they are needed, especially at the end of the night when they're emptying each one of these four receptacles. Everything is on hold until that police officer can go from one precinct to another. So having two inside helps that process.
Okay.
It will depend. In this instance, I would go for all day. It's still a savings, but because we've never done a dual election, I would feel more confident having an extra officer in there. If it was just the town election or just the state primary, no. But, but coming up for the special town election on March 22nd, definitely. The special state election, probably, because we anticipate a higher level of volume on those.
And just regarding to the stickers. I like the stickers.
I know, everybody does. I like the stickers.
They may be a nuisance with the savings.
Not the kids. The kids love the stickers. They wear them, but not the parents.
I think that's an encouraging perspective of the election.
I don't, I don't argue your point.
So to me, with the two-thirds savings, buy some stickers. And I know it's a nuisance cleaning up afterwards a little bit, but I, I think they're a good thing, having to help promote participation later. Younger kids who go with their parents now. To me, it's worth the expenditure and the expenditure of time afterwards to clean up after them, just personally.
Mrs. Stats?
The only thing is that the board needs to take action by majority vote if they want to do this, no less than 35 days ahead of the election date, the change date. So that would be March 26th. I would encourage you to do so after you discuss it more sooner than later if you're going to, because the earlier that my office knows, the better. We can be prepared and get some notice out there. Does anyone have any other questions?
No. Thank you very much.
Do we, we don't have a motion prepared this evening?
Is there one?
No, sir.
There's not?
I mean, you can make one.
You can make one.
Um, you know, I don't know if that would fall under...
I just wanted to...
On the agenda, it just says to discuss.
Don't discuss. You can still, yeah, still take action.
You can take action as...
After discussion, it just, my concern would be, should there be some sort of specific language in the motion to reference?
Well, I mean, we would want... Well, I mean, we would want to reference that and perhaps something, and I can't speak to it, maybe it's something that should be run by town council, but I, I would certainly say in accordance with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2013 that the board votes to change the date of the town election to be on the same day as the special state primary as provided for in the Act.
We meet on the 25th, so we still have another meeting this month.
That's certainly ample time. I think it should be.
I'm willing to adjourn the motion this evening and then run it by town council. If it's not approved, then we can come back on the next meeting and redo it.
I'd rather get it done.
The consensus is to move forward.
Gets the word out soon.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the rescheduling of the annual town election to coincide with the special.
State primary.
State primary to be held on.
April 30th, 2013.
20th, April 30th, 2013. In accordance with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2013, legislative legislation, authorize the rescheduling of certain municipal elections.
Second. Your motion is second. Mr. Prisco, discussion.
Mr. Stevens, I'm going to abstain from voting on this only because I am up for reelection and I don't want it to be looked upon from anybody that decides to pull papers that I voted, that may be any advantage by doing it earlier, so I'm going to elect not to vote and just abstain from it.
Further discussion?
I'm not going to abstain because I don't think it impacts the deadline dates or any, has no impact on any of that. So I don't see, I don't look at it the same way as.
Anything further? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero. One abstainer.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
People move back to item four, reappointments, appointments, Fourth of July Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following name for appointment to the Fourth of July Committee for a term that will expire December 31st, 2015. There are two openings, one applicant, John Amaral, 44, Southwood Road.
Second. Your motion is second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Amaral has willingly stepped forward to serve on the Fourth of July Committee and bring back the Fourth of July. He's been a participant, volunteered for the effort previously, and we certainly appreciate his willingness to step forward and truly be kind when it comes to bringing him aboard. Now, I know he can't do anything about the weather, but he can't do something about the Atlantic, you know? I would strongly recommend the appointment of Mr. Amaral.
Any further? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Ms. Paveo, are you aware whether or not our DPW director is joining us for the approval of the snow and ice deficit spending?
Yes, I believe he is going to be here September 45th.
Okay. We have, we have to do that at eight?
Do the budget report.
Suppose we go down to?
He's in the hallway.
Through the hallways?
Yep.
Excellent. Wait a few moments. Perfect timing. Mr. Conner Valley, actually, we're going to deal with your snow and ice deficit spending right now. How's that? Is that good timing for you?
I guarantee you, we're definitely in a deficit by Friday.
You were in a deficit before, Friday, but that's all right. All right. Sheriff, if you want to, the former says to where you were at prior to Friday?
170? Why, man, to the 175?
Do you mind just coming up to the podium, please?
Was it 170? The year-to-date expended, 173, 62, 62.
Right. The appropriation is 175,000.
There's encumbrances of 68,440. So if you.
I can't see. I don't have my glasses, I'm sorry.
If you count the encumbrances, if you count the encumbrances, the deficit is 63,808.
That was a question.
Mr. Stevens?
The encumbrances, have they got something to do with this weekend storm or are those encumbrances prior to?
Prior to.
Prior to.
So in the red, like $67,000?
Sixty-seven plus whatever was spent on hurricane.
Including the storm.
Correct. This report was run out in 2006, so it was in preparation for this meeting before this weekend storm.
Questions?
Do we have a ballpark estimate of what this storm has cost us? I know it's ongoing, but.
Estimate would be at least $100,000.
With this past weekend storm.
I have a question.
Mr. Prisco.
Take about a month ago, I had been looking at the overtime, and I'm sure this got back to you, but, because I have to ask now, you have a couple of your employees throughout since the snow and ice started this year, where they would work on the same day, and I would see two entries with the same person's name, double time, same rate and everything, and it didn't make a lot of sense to me, and I pulled the time cards and looked at it, and I, I was a little surprised at what I saw. You had an individual come in and work for seven hours, double time, went home, and a few hours later maybe got called in because there was a, some ice, maybe the police department had an issue that was around town. Person comes in, spent about 45 minutes and then punched out and went home, but we paid him another four hours. And that happened several times up till the end of December. And I was just curious, why are we sending guys home after 45 minutes and we're paying them for four hours when to me it would seem if you have one icy spot in town, that you would just have them stay for the next three hours and drive around and try to find the other icy spots since we're paying them?
They're on the clock for that four hours, so if we get a call back, it's at no expense to the town.
I understand, but what, I, I don't, so I just don't understand the practice of sending them home at all. I mean, the town, the taxpayers paid for four hours of service. Sending them home, I didn't, you know, I'm just curious. It doesn't, in my eyes, it just doesn't seem like the best use of the money. Why don't we just let them stay here and let them drive around time and try to find? And I, just explain, I, I'm looking at this from a simplistic point of view, so I'm not a DPW director, but it didn't seem to make a lot of sense to me why, and we had that multiple times happen.
It's happened maybe four times. And they could drive around town all day, Mike, and not find what residents' concerns are, so it's kind of a waste of money to have them drive around looking for things over 160 miles of lane miles of road. So typically, we respond to calls. We have areas we know that are specific to schools, police and fire, that are the trouble areas. We address those, and then, generally, the police call for public safety issue, we respond.
No, I understand.
If there's no other thing to respond to, they're released, but we still own them in that four hours. If there's another call-in, they come back at no expense to the town. That's the way the contract is structured.
Okay, well, I see it differently than you do, then. I, I just think it's a waste of the taxpayer money to send an employee home when you're paying them to be on the job, and I guess we just have to agree that we have a difference of opinion on this one.
Just a reminder, I see it a little bit differently. As part of the contractual agreement, the collective bargaining agreement, you know, after the regular work schedule and all, they get a call back. Police Department contacts DPW, says there's an icy spot on Abel Street or, you know, or weed road, you know, some of the places like that. They come out, they respond, but in any other area that the police are finding about a public safety may, may point out. For the collective bargaining agreement, the employees get a minimum four-hour.
Sure.
Call back.
I understand that.
With the fire department or police department, and, all right, okay. You know, it gets, that's part of the contractual agreement. If you want to just have them sit there for the four hours because you own them for the four hours, as Mr. Conner Valley pointed out, if they get called, they get called in at, you know, eight o'clock at night, we own them until midnight, whether we send them home or we have them sitting down at the DPW garage waiting for another call. We own them for those four hours. And I don't know that it's anybody's best interest to just have them drive around town aimlessly looking for, looking for something that hasn't been called in or isn't, it isn't a problem. We have cruisers out there on a regular basis, we have the ambulance out there on a regular basis, and firefighters out there on a regular basis, as well as residents, you know, calling in. So for years, this has been well-managed and never been really an issue. So I think the overtime budget of DPW has always been well-managed, and it's never been a bone of contention in the budgetary sessions for as long as I've been sitting here, whether it be under the previous DPW director, Mr. Spindler, Mr. Hanlon, you know, Mr. Conner Valley. They've all been aware, the board is extremely conscious of spending money unnecessarily. I think it's been well-managed, and I think they do a great job. And by the way, aside, terrific job this weekend. Applause to you, the management of your department. Tracing our roads with other area communities, and once again, early preparation paid off significantly, and did a great job.
Pass it on to the other.
Mr. Stevens?
Well, don't take my comments to mean anything against the employees that they do a bad job. I'm not saying that at all. They do a fantastic job. All I'm saying is that it's a management issue in my mind, if we're paying the, for four hours, I just didn't see the reason to send them home, and, you know, and again, we can just disagree, agree to disagree on this one. I think if you have one icy spot in town, you're going to have more than one icy spot in town. And, you know, you have them for three extra hours, so maybe have them drive around and look for other icy spots, or have them do some, some other things that need to get done, you know, that they're going to get done the next day.
I guess what I'm missing is, are we inferring that we're calling people back unnecessarily twice?
No, I'm not. What I'm saying is, my issue is that we pay, pay an employee four hours of work for a one hour's worth of labor. And when the taxpayers paid for that four hours, then I think there's plenty of work. I mean, you look at the overtime, there seems to be, you know, every day, every week, you know, almost, you know, five or six days out of the seven-day week. We have overtime work, so.
Has there been some issues or some situations which have not been properly addressed on the call back?
Again, I'm not saying that there is, I have anything.
So there was the job that they were called back for was handled and done and handled appropriately, and didn't require us to call someone back twice or double time in the same day. You know, so whatever the incident is that resulted in the need for a call was handled, whether it.
It was.
Whether it took one hour or four hours.
Right. And I'm, Steve, in your, all I'm saying is, I think the best use of the hours isn't letting the person go home, all right? The best use of the hour is to have them finding some issues here in town and doing other things in town for those three hours rather than go home. That's all I'm, that's all I'm asking, okay? I'm trying to understand the practice of what, how this works. In my mind, that's.
You have to defer to the DPW.
And I heard his answer, and we have a difference of opinion on that.
Other things to be done in addition to the call, you know, a plow has to be reattached and things like that, as, as well as going out and sanding an area. My guess is, and my knowledge is, is that when they're called back, they handle the other situation, too. The time is utilized in the back.
Okay. And the time cards that I looked at, that's not what was happening. They came in, they worked for 45 minutes, in some case, an hour, and then they go home, so.
Maybe there was nothing else to do?
Okay. All right. But the next day, but the next day, we had overtime. So, you know, I don't want to debate it, I'm just making a point of it because it just didn't seem right.
But, again, I understand.
It's not the employees' fault. There's no issue with the employees.
There are instances here that are being made that I think.
No, you're creating them. I'm not creating them. It's a management.
You know, the contractual agreement, we're obliged to do certain things, and we've met it, so. But I think you do a great job, and I think the department's been well-managed, and I think the overtime budgets have been managed well, too.
Okay.
Mr. Conner Valley, I agree with Mr. O'Leary in terms of the work that your department did over this weekend. I think you've behaved much better than most other communities, even our neighbors to the north and our neighbors to the south. I commend you and all your men regarding that. But I do agree with Mr. Prisco concerning the issue that he raised, that if we have a man coming in, paying him for four hours, I think the taxpayer are going to want that person. I can see, seeing the overtime that's been expended through the date of 2006, it looked like it spent what had been budgeted for snow and ice overtime. I think he has spent up to 100% of that overtime budget up through that date. So I'm sure there was work that could have been done on those occasions, whether it's one, two, three, or four. I'm sure that individual or individuals could have been put to some use that the community could have got a benefit from. Also, if you can explain a couple of things, under, comes under our next topic we're going to discuss this evening is the six-month budget report. But in a line item that's entitled "Snow and Ice Repairs," if I read it correctly, your snow and ice expense repairs, it looks, the budget was 6,200. You had expended 8,100. You encumbered $4,000 over and above that. So do we have a, do we have a breakdown as to what those, what's considered repairs for snow and ice? What's in that category?
We repaired a vehicle last summer, truck 41, tore it apart and put it back together. So there's repairs related to that.
Is that typical that those repairs would be under the snow and ice?
For vehicles that 100% dedicated to snow and ice.
Okay.
We have three vehicles that 100% year-round, just snow and ice only.
Okay.
They have just standards on the back, no dump bodies, but that was one of those three vehicles.
And that's maintenance that you were anticipating to undergo this past summer?
We routinely try to maintain the equipment so it's ready for storms like this, and that equipment needed to be taken apart, put back together to make sure the brakes worked, hydraulics worked, electrical worked. So it's kind of a tear-down, a rebuild.
All right.
Which extends the life of the truck a minimum five years. Mr. Fraz, as you know, a truck like that costs in the order of 150-plus dollars, $1,000, excuse me. So we routinely do heavy maintenance and light maintenance on the equipment.
So what would have been?
But the budget numbers there are just the same numbers that have been there for decades. It has no basis on what reality is. Over the last 10 years, rolling average, snow and ice, even with last year's expenses, it's in the order of 300-plus thousand dollars. So those, those budget items are not.
What, what?
Don't relate to anything real.
That's fair, but what would you, as the department head, recommend that the appropriate budget number should be for snow and ice? I understand why.
I did, you know, and I proposed that last year, and it was cut back to the number we always use based on our past practice of budgeting.
But I'm.
I'd recommend we budget closer to what we actually spent, but I realize that's an issue for the overall budget.
Okay.
But we historically are, we budget, the town north reading budget the lowest of just about everybody around here per total appropriation and per lane mile. So for us to go over budget, it's not that hard, because we really do not appropriate in the same ballpark as a lot of our surrounding communities.
You have another category here. It looks like, the way it reads, "Snow and Ice."
Can I just go back to budget for one second? I mean, what you were talking about, we budget every year, and I, and, you know, Dick and I are in the same line of business, so, and, and the reason, and I'm sure most of you know, I know, you know, you guys have been on this floor, so you know what's going on. The purpose of budgeting the same number every year is, once you increase that number, you're locked into that number forever, you can never decrease it. So, I mean, every community, I, my budget hasn't changed in 13 years, and typically what will happen is, the governing body, typical city council or selectman and all that, don't want to increase that number because if you don't spend it, it's still held against you for, you know, for public budget purposes, so. So as much as I agree with Dick, we should probably increase it, and I should do the same, and in my community, it's very diff, it's a hot sell. And I apologize for my appearance, but I'm getting in from, from working the storm. I will say there's one community in the south that's actually in phenomenal shape, too.
I'm really going to mention it, though.
Mr. Stevens?
And the board shouldn't forget that the past couple of years, we've increased the amount of reserve, the difference between our receipts and what we budgeted and our miles to cover the deficit going forward. And we've spent over that in past years, and we may be headed that way this year, too. But, you know, we've taken steps to deal with it without getting caught in this budget dilemma of, you know, if you budget it and you got a big number and you don't spend it all, then you got to wait for free cash certification the following year. I, I think the practice that we've been taking and the path that we've been taking by increasing the reserve each year a little bit is aimed at minimizing the impact on the following year's budget. I think we're on the proper path to do that.
Just another item, the way it reads to me, it's in the, a line item that says "Snow and Ice Expense, Other Supplies." If you can help me identify what, what's behind it? What's the detail behind that "other supply"?
Meals. Sometimes the way they, at my encoded, that's actually road salt, things like that, which should be immaterial. should be in materials. So sometimes things get, but it's typically the smaller things. By the union contract, we pay for meals for the men and things like that. So usually the restaurant's billing us for those meals.
Just so we're on the safe edge, this is a line item that the budget appropriation was 60,600. And to date, or as of February 6, 28,668 was expended, 31,750 was encumbered. So that's why I ask. I'm sure, I'm sure you're not spending $60,000 of meals. Otherwise, I'd like to be taken to dinner, I guess.
If I may, just, Dick, it's vehicle parts, it's rock salt, plow parts, so it's not the meal category, this is other supplies. The meal category is other charges and expenses, which is below other supplies.
I think there were tires in there. Do you typically buy tires? Do you particularly, particularly buy tires on snow and ice?
Tires for the vehicles that are 100% for snow and ice. Other than that, Liz and I worked it out, those are regular mechanic places. But the rock salt's the biggest one, I think we were in the...
But is that, is it that, is that salt in this category or is it somewhere else? Is it in materials?
Is it materials one, but sometimes it, just the way that clerk codes it, it goes into the wrong account.
I see rock salt from Eastern Minerals quite a few times under other supplies.
Okay.
But I have different amounts for the two-six report, so I'm not sure if you're looking at a December report or...
What was in that packet?
Is it detailed?
It says February 6.
This is on...
Detailed, yeah.
So other supplies, year-to-date expended should be 59,237.20?
This is in, Mr., I cast a question. It's on page, the document, no, the document we received is on page 67 of that particular report. The date of the report is 1/14/2013.
So that's through period six then, I'm thinking?
Okay.
So there was another report on two-six that was run.
Okay.
So it has different year-to-date expenditure.
Okay, so, okay. As of February 6, so prior to the storm, we spent $238,000 in snow and ice, is it?
No, we spent 170 with encumbrances.
We paid out the door, 170, 367.
Okay.
In addition to that, there's encumbrances of 68,440.
And how much of that 170 is, is the rock salt and supplies like that?
I have to break it down real quick.
The report I had spent was in the order of 35,000 for rock salt. Spent, not the encumbrances, not anything that's in the pipeline to be delivered.
Okay. Mr. Prisco.
I'm assuming an encumbrance is certainly not labor and it's, and it's probably not contractors, so it has to be in the supply area.
Right. The contractors are paid, they get a time card just like an employee, so we pay them as we go, we don't encumber anything.
Yeah, right. So I'm thinking the encumbrances that are on your list must be in the categories of materials, I think, purchased items that you've put a PO out for, you haven't received the money.
Right. It's the salt, the hay bales for downtown to go along the fence, we have to buy that every year. Last year, we actually bought the fence, we used to pay to rent those things, 2,000 bucks a year, just $3,000, we just bought them. So it's already paid for itself this year. So it's the NAPA stuff, that's automobile parts. Dyer Sales, Dyer Sales is a local business, on Conker Street went out of business, so they offered the town quite a discount on what they had in stock for cutting edges, plows, sander parts. So a lot of Dyer Sales went in there. So that was a up to 50% savings for the community. And now that they're out of business, our nearest supplier, I believe, is Manchester, New Hampshire, which is quite a haul. So we took advantage of that. We had a good relationship with them, so.
You don't want to share that with any other community that savings? You want to call another community and maybe say, hey?
Well, Joe, what can I tell you?
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Cannavale?
I just have one comment. And Dick, from one DPW guy to another, I haven't been in North Reading all that much this past weekend, but regardless of how much I've been here, I did drive through on the way here tonight. Commend you guys for the number of hours they put in, because I know what my guys put in. And, and just, you know, everybody says, oh, it's overtime and all that, but I can tell you from experience, it's blood money when you're putting in 60 straight hours. So commend, please thank all of them on my behalf and all of our behalf and the citizens' behalfs. But what I wanted to stress is, I hope that the residents can be a little bit patient with what's going on. This is, you know, one of the fifth largest storms we've had in years and there's a lot to get done still, even though the streets are clean and all that. So I just, I just hope that, you're not getting a lot of calls and complaints because you don't hear the good things, you only hear the bad. And I just, I just hope that everybody can, can lay back and just give you the opportunity to do what you need to do to get done. And again, you know, wish them all well for me.
I'll pass it on to the man. Our plan tonight is, we're actually clearing all the sidewalks that approach the schools. So all the sidewalks, Hable Street.
Great job.
Route 62 over by the little school, as we speak, they're out there right now. So we're going to keep going tonight till that's all done. We worked all day today to finish up the schools, get them ready, help the schools remove drift of snow, all the emergency exits and things like that.
Mr. Prisco.
Is that the primary reason why the school was canceled today was sidewalks or were there other reasons?
No.
There was a lot of work to be done.
There were some exits, emergency exits that just weren't cleared. And Greg talked to the superintendent, we just thought, let's be on the safe side, you know.
I think it was the right decision, he said, absolutely.
Not a lot of children walking this time, but we do care.
Still a lot of communities closed tomorrow.
I was wondering if it was...
A lot of communities still closed tomorrow.
Too much law on the roof or...
I went to Boston today, Joe.
They're closed tomorrow.
Had to go to Mass General, what a mess downtown.
Yeah, they're closed, some of those closed till Thursday.
Really?
Yeah. So there's still, still a lot of work to do.
In your city, what do you, what do you do with it? Where do you move it?
That's just it, we have no place to put it. You're fortunate enough that, you know, you have left street parking and all that, so we're fighting cars now.
It's a lot harder in your city.
Mr. O'Leary.
Just in a call back in relation to the minimum callback times, some sort of a question to the board members, I guess. If we're looking to scrutinize the DPW and the minimum callback times, are we going to be looking to scrutinize, again, do the same thing with the fire department and the police department? Because those collective bargaining agreements call for the same thing. There'll be callbacks on ambulance service, there'll be callbacks for, you know, whistle being blown, you know, because of some sort of a fire occurrence. There are minimum callback times and we don't require fire department personnel to stay? Police department, minimum court time, which you've heard familiar with? Do you spend the full time there? Do we expect them to stay on the board, wait for, come back home and do some paperwork? Are we going to be venturing into that as far as managing our departments in relation to the collective bargaining agreements, which we negotiate? Part of those minimum callback times encourage our employees to be available when we need them, when we call. And, you know, at times, we need them for the full time and other times, we don't. But they're also available for the entire time if you need them. So we seem to be picking on them tonight, raising the question. Let's not just single out the DPW, if we're going to be going down that path, let's discuss it, or if we're going to be cherry picking which department we're going to go to.
I don't think this is discriminatory, I'm not, I hope he doesn't feel this is all I'm picking on, I think these are just natural questions that come out from reviewing the data and that's all.
I've been here a long time and it's, you know, I didn't hear, I don't hear the talk about it in the police department, I don't hear about it in the fire department, and it's only been recently we've been hearing about it through the DPW. So if we're going to go this route as a board, let's go that route. Discuss it, Tyler, discuss it in terms of time.
Mr. Prisco.
Mr. O'Leary, if you sign the warrants every week and you review what you're supposed to review for the payrolls.
I do.
Then you would, you would see the comments, I mean, I've scrutinized it on both, on all sides. So even last week, some issues with the fire department, so I'm not picking on the DPW, okay?
I don't always see your comments, sometimes I sign before you, sometimes, so I don't always see your comments.
Well, I've never seen you sign before me, so I've always put my comments out there, not picking on anybody, this is a management issue. It's all about making sure that taxpayers' dollars are being used to the best of our ability. That's all this is, is in picking on one department, okay? I do take some offense to what you're trying to get at. I'm not here tonight to pick a grudge on the DPW, okay?
I'm trying to get at something, are they going to be consistent or are they not, as a board, not individually?
Well, I'll tell you what, I sign those payrolls every week, I haven't seen your signatures on many of them, okay?
Gentlemen?
I, I, I review them, I go through them in detail and I send the questions on every department, not just the DPW.
Gentlemen, we're going to, we have a longer agenda, we're going to move forward, but it's not discrimination, it's the DPW department at all. There are other departments that, the overtime was...
We're going to be charging our department heads to hold people for the full time. Why not?
I think we...
I mean, there was a suggestion that was made to the DPW, like some members, but...
And I think if you're calling, calling someone back in and they're getting four hours of overtime, I think the public's going to want to get the four hours of service from that particular person to person. That's my opinion, so. But I think we can move forward.
Might I suggest that the chairman put it on the agenda as an item of discussion in relation to our collective bargaining agreements and how we want to hold our employees for full time?
Sure.
If that's what we want to do. I just don't want to, again, single out one department.
No, I agree.
And if we want to do something different for another, let's do it collectively, you know.
Sure. Okay. Do we have a motion? So we're done discussing this? Unless anyone else has any more questions for Mr. Cannavale?
With regards to staffed act reimbursement, we got a message from Senator Tar. I'm not sure the federal government's made that call yet, but he referenced possible federal and possible state reimbursement. State really kicks in in my career, but we have to meet a certain number of snowfall, it can't be routine maintenance. I'm not sure anybody's made that call yet, but that would help defray the cost of this one.
This past weekend?
The October storm from two years ago.
Oh, the October storm.
For the storm. Just an example, the October storm, that cost us additional 80, $52,000. We got an $81,000 reimbursement for FEMA. We got that cash last fall, I think. So they allow us, they actually pay us for the trucks during the regular time, which is pretty advantageous. So if that happens, it'll make a big dent in what those costs is.
Thank you.
Ready? Mr. Chairman, I move to declare a snow and ice emergency in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31D, for FY 2013.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Item 8.
Turn this back over to Mr. Forty now he's back? Sure. No, you may have to leave.
I have to leave by nine.
Okay.
I have to get back to work by 9:30, so.
I'll do it.
Okay.
Sorry.
We'll move to item eight, assign the special town meeting warrant for the March 18, 2013 high school/middle school project supplemental funding. Motion?
I got to read all this, right? You want me to read the whole thing?
You do.
That's why he declined.
Yeah, right. He owes you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to sign the March 18, 2013 special town meeting warrant to consider the following Article 1, to see if the town will vote to appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds an additional sum of money to be expended under the direction of the secondary school building committee for the addition and renovation of the middle school and construction of the new high school to create a new integrated middle high school located at Park Street and Sherman Road. The project, for which the project town will initially appropriate the sum of $107,728 under Article 1 of the March 19, 2012 special town meeting, in which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren for at least 50 years and for which the town may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And any project costs the town incurs in excess of the grant approved by the receiv, by received from MSBA shall be sole responsibility of the town. Any grant that the town may receive from MSBA, for the project shall not exceed the lesser of one, 51.49% of eligible approved project cost as determined by the MSBA, or two, the total maximum grant amount as determined by the MSBA, provided the additional appropriation authorized hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for payment of principal and interest on any borrowing authorized hereunder from the limitations on total taxes imposed by Chapter 59, Section 21 of General Law's Proposition 2 and 1/2, and provided further that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town and the MSBA or what it will do in relation thereto.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Might as well wrap it up. Number nine, it's related to item eight. Item nine, vote language for ballot question, March 22, 2013 special election, high school/middle school project supplemental funding.
Mr. Chairman, I move to insert the following language as ballot question number one on the March 22, 2013 special election. Shall the town of North Reading be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to construct an addition and renovated, I'm sorry, in addition and renovate the middle school and construct a new high school to create, to create a new integrated middle high school located at Park Street and Sherman Road?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Back to item seven, discussion of the six-month budget report. Do we have something else for you to sign?
I was told you need to put it into Dropbox today, but I have our copy because they weren't. One is the summary of the six-month report and one is today and they're, they're...
Thank you, Liz. Thank you.
So this is an update to what we had in here?
It's, one is summarizing the December 31st one and one is through today.
Thank you.
And I did a little change to percentage used and I'll explain that. So if we can just look at the summary, the summarized December 33, 2012 year-to-date budget report, and I'll just explain what I did and it may be a little easier to read. There is no canned report that we can run that will spit it out the way that we want it to, so we did some manual fixing to it. So if you look at the first line of fuel, you'll see the original appropriation, which is the original budget amount, and you'll see a transfer and adjustments column, which would be any encumbrance carryovers from FY 12 or any town meeting transfers in, majority of them happened at October town meeting. And then you'll have a revised budget amount. So you have your original appropriation plus any transfers, which equals your revised budget amount. And then you have year-to-date expended, which is money that we have actually... And then you have year-to-date expended, which is money that we have actually cut checks for, and it's out the door. And then you have the encumbrance column, which is purchase orders, and it's, you know, your intent to purchase or you have purchased in the bill is in the mail. And then lastly, you have available budget including encumbrances. So, on the report that you have that's dated one fourteen, two thousand and thirteen, which was for, through December thirtieth as well, the available budget number was what is available remaining in that account or line to be spent or encumbered. It does not include the encumbrances, and that was a little confusing to some people. So, this report adds the encumbrances back, so you really, you know, you could, I left the encumbrance column just so you could see that there were encumbrances out there. However, you can see that those encumbrances could be closed, and there is an available dollar value available to encumber or spend. And the percent used column on the report that is dated one fourteen takes into account the year-to-date expended plus the encumbrances over the revised budget amount. So, if you look at that at first glance, you're going to say, oh, fuel is ninety-six percent, ninety-six percent spent, but really, we haven't spent that much yet because we have the available budget plus the encumbrance that is combined.
So, I'm assuming that the reason why the fuel encumbrance is so high is that we've got a contract for fuel based on some gallonage and-
We do, and they-
And that's why it looks, that's why it looks like an encumbrance?
Yes, fuel, they encumbered the, almost the entire budget amount. The only difference with fuel is each month, the available budget will increase because the school department reimburses us for any fuel that they purchase. So, that's done through an interdepartmental transfer, and we have to increase the encumbrance, which then makes the available budget. So, it's just some, you know, accounting that we have to do for the reason that they encumbered the whole amount upfront, just to reserve it because they anticipate spending it. But so forth, really, if you look at what they expect to date, it's forty-six point five percent according to the summarized report. You know, it may be easier for you to understand at first glance rather than seeing the ninety-six percent and not even looking at the encumbrance column if you're just taking a quick glance. So, I don't know how, if you guys want to go through line by line, what do you want to do, if there's any-
I have, Mr. Masari.
What I would like you to do is just highlight the areas that you think we're going to have some concern with.
Right.
You know, like Veteran Services appears to be running over.
Yeah.
And if there's any other area that you anticipate we're going to be running short, and have to go to the Finance Committee for, or maybe take action at town meeting, the rest of it seems to be pretty true to form and-
Right.
Right on target for the vast majority of the budget.
Exactly.
So, which areas do you foresee being-
Well, the number one area of concern, and if you look at the report that dated today, two eleven, you'll see Veterans Services on the last page, and they have already received a reserve fund transfer of forty thousand dollars. I anticipate them needing another forty thousand dollar reserve fund transfer by the end of the year, according to the Veterans Agent calculation of the trends that it is going at right now. You know, we have, I think there's at least four new clients this year, and it's just, it's just growing. It's, you know, increased costs in prescriptions and everything, it's just, you know, not a good situation, and next year's budget is going to be increased substantially because of it. Case load is just up, up about thirty percent, so. So, that's an area of concern. Right now, they're not in the red, but very, by the end of March, they'll be in the red, so they'll need another reserve fund transfer.
Just a question regarding that. The seventy-five percent reimbursement from the state, what's the lag on receipts?
We don't see, it's a year difference that we make up for what we use this year to what we get next year. So, next year's state aid will represent last year's seventy-five percent.
Got it.
And so forth.
Should we be earmarking those reimbursements from the state specifically to Veterans Services as opposed to general fund stuff as we're appropriating the money?
No, I mean, it just all, it's all general fund revenue. We just need to keep in mind during budget season, when we're going over the budget, that it is seventy-five percent reimbursement, so, you know, and she, this year, has done a great narrative explaining over the trends and showing what her budget really is if we got the money right away to offset her budget.
We don't, so we still need the cash upfront, you know, from a cash flow statement. We still need the cash.
But even if we earmark the amount that we receive this year for her, it's not seventy-five percent of what she spent at the door this year.
I think the better approach would be to-
Up the budget.
Up the budget.
Up the budget, so, same thing, up the budget. The other thing was in relation to, since the chairman, the FINCOM's appropriation for the reserve fund, and if you're talking forty thousand dollars already out for Veterans Services, another forty thousand dollars, you know, that's-
Substantial.
That's two-thirds of the, two-thirds of the reserve fund that we normally approach. How we look to have made, well, we don't know yet, but could be anticipated maybe at the June town meeting, having an article to appropriate more of the reserve fund to take care of transfers at the end of the year?
Um, we hope not.
Or we'd be doing specifically into the pyramidal budgets?
I hope not. I don't see other departments, besides the fact of the storm, I know that the fire department, you know, spent substantial amount of money for this past week in the storm, so there could be a potential for the fire department needing a reserve fund transfer, but I don't see other departments, you know, and maybe DPDW, but that's, you know, unless you use money that was other than snow and ice, because if it's all in snow and ice, there isn't an issue with that.
Health Department's eighty percent.
You have a question, Mike?
Yeah, the Health Department, it's seventy-nine point four percent.
It's at the environmental.
That's a mosquito-
Yeah.
That's a mosquito, which they do in the summertime.
Okay.
Questions here?
The majority, exactly what that, what Mr. Larry you said.
Okay, so we won't need any of that in-
No, it starts with the next budget cycle.
Good.
So, some of those are upfront right away costs, so that's not a concern.
I was worried about the spring. I wasn't sure if there was stuff to be done.
Another concern, it's not right now, but with the special election, there could be some additional costs. I know we're combining the elections, but town clerk could need some more money. She could absorb some of it, but that could be an area where last year was-
Well, just added a special town meeting, a special election.
That's what, yes, so it could have some added reserve fund costs, as well as the town administrator for the town reports and the printing of the warrants, that comes out of his budget. So, last year with the special town meeting, special election, there was money that was needed for his budget. So, with those two departments and the fire department, we will probably use all of the reserve funds this year.
Mr. Masari?
Can we still use three percent transfers the last two months that they have rescinded?
If, if, if there is three percent to-
Yeah, right, no, I understand that.
To transfer.
I was more interested in whether or not the law got extended, because that was temporary initially.
We can still do it.
They still can.
Mr. Ollie.
Just in relation to what the town clerk mentioned earlier, the reimbursement from the state as far as a funded mandate, she inferred that we got the reimbursement in that same fiscal year for the special election, two thousand and ten. So, if we get the reimbursement in this fiscal year, we can immediately-
Offset her budget.
Offset her budget.
But my concern is the extra cost for the March special town meeting, special election.
Yeah, that's on us.
No, right, so that's my concern, is that there will be some extra costs associated with that, so. And I mentioned the fire department, there has been some extra costs for EMS, for the ALS program, different hospitals have included some costs and also supplies. So, there's potential there, but we, you know, we met last Friday or last Thursday with the fire department, and we are watching closely, so with the storm, there was about ninety thousand of additional costs that he incurred, so. That's my major concern. Other departments are trending where they are supposed to be, if not lower than they're supposed to be, so.
Is, is this the report that you ran off of MUNIS, a custom report, using Crystal Reports, or?
Yes, we modified it. So, we can't run it as a canned report, we had to run it at that percent.
Okay, but it came right off, it's a report that's generated off MUNIS.
Yes, yeah.
Great.
It just looks a little different.
Mr. Briscoe. So, this report is based on managing to a bottom-line number per department.
Correct.
And that's what I noticed when I was reviewing the MUNIS report, it seemed like you had a lot of expenses in line items that we had no budgeted money for. So, that kind of concerns me, and as we go into this budget year, I would like to try to, and I think it would make sense that our budgets should match up to our MUNIS budget and what we're using, how we're tracking the money. And I think we, I'd like to discuss that we try to institute some kind of a policy, so if you're going to spend in a line item where you don't have money budgeted for, that you have to redraw it from another line item where you have the money, so it all balances out. So, we do an, you know, in our department transfer, because right now, the way I look at it is you've got people spending money, and they're just managing to a bottom-line number. I don't think that's what we ever intended to do with the finances, at least, I mean, I don't know why we would spend all this time on budgeting if that's what we're going to do.
I think that it's just been prior practice, you know, an example is how Mr. Karavali said, that it's just always been that way, and it's just always been that way. So, we have controls in place in our system that don't allow you to spend over your bottom line. They're not line-by-line controls. You know, that can be a decision that's made to put in the line-by-line controls and enforce it. You know, we can-
It doesn't seem to make, doesn't seem to make sense to have you and your staff manage that way, but if we're not going to use it to manage the bottom line, I mean, that just doesn't make any sense to me. I would never run my business that way.
Right.
I wouldn't assume we want to run the town that way.
I encourage departments, regardless of it being a mandate, to put things in the right pots, per se, you know, if you're going to anticipate spending a hundred dollars on postage, well, put a budget in of a hundred dollars.
Right.
Regardless if you had that three years ago, what's been happening is just been, the budgets have just rolled forward due to probably, partly, the economic condition of level funding your budget, so they just assume, well, I'll just leave it in that line instead of taking that hundred dollars and putting fifty to postage and, you know, fifty to office supplies or-
Yeah, I mean, even the selectmen budget is victim to this, because we don't allocate any overtime for Jackie's services. When Karen's out, she has to work over her limits, so she, we have to pay her overtime. We should budget for that next year. We should, those kinds of things, that's just a small example. I mean, I went through that hundred and thirty-eight pages, there's probably a thousand examples in there where we're spending money in budgets we just don't have allocated, not exceeding, clearly not exceeding, we're managing, they're doing a great job managing the bottom line. But save me the time of managing, you know, being here on Saturday, there's no need for me to be here on a Saturday, just, let's just negotiate the bottom-line number and let's move on, if that's what the majority of the board wants to do, because we are really wasting a lot of time if this is what we want to do.
You know, something that I'm going to, when we meet on our Saturday meeting, is give you a report probably through February twenty-eighth, since we meet on March second, and I will give you something similar to what you have in your packet from January fourteenth, and you can see if it lines up with what the departments are submitting, and you can, you know, then say, well, if you're spending, you know, twenty thousand dollars in tree care, why are you only budgeting fourteen thousand?
Right, postage seems to be a problem. Almost every budget in, in the departments are exceeding their postage. Not a big deal, but let's budget appropriately. But if you're spending over that in postage, where are you taking it from and within your budget? What are we sacrificing? That's what I'd like to know. That's managing-
Something's being left over.
Right, because the numbers tell the story, so we need to know what we're doing. Unless we don't want to, unless this board just wants to manage to a bottom-line number, then I say we forego the budget, then the line item budgets, and just negotiate a bottom-line number.
I think there's middle ground here.
Okay.
I think there's middle ground from the point of view of it's overkill to, in the budget, you know, I consider office supplies maybe, and, you know, within it, postage is in there, it's in there, you know, it's such a small amount, maybe that's a bad example, but I think that would be helpful in the budget process, you know, from the bottoms, looking at it more from the bottoms up. But to have so many fine categories, to refine it down to the point where, you know, every little item is that a category, I think, is overkill, so.
Right, I don't agree.
Yeah, and I think maybe a reasonable progression would be in the budget process is to take a look at these specific line items, and I don't think they're too much of a burden, you know, and take those numbers, put them in the, you know, into the, well, they're in the MUNIS budget, because, I mean, and they're in the overall MUNIS system because they're part of the budget. And, you know, let's say by the end of the following year, we're going to have things trued up, so we give everybody, all the employees, a chance to work on that issue. And, you know, we're in the process of implementing the rest of MUNIS, we'll have all this stuff together, there's some more training going on, we may have a better chance of making this all work. And if there's items that are down too detailed, you know, I would push them up a little bit and combine them.
It's, the little stuff doesn't bother me, but I'll give you an example, the lieutenants' overtime in the police department, they spent almost sixty thousand dollars in a line item where we had no, nothing budgeted. To me, that would seem, you know, okay, I do-
I don't disagree with you there, Mike.
That, that item is, the payroll system, the payroll system is limited to the amount of codes that you can have, so it automatically is associated, the lieutenants are automatically coded, associated with that line in the budget. So, that is something that the chief and I periodically, we clean up and we move it to union overtime, because that's where it really belongs, but the coding, it limits us. So, we were going to look at-
Is that a system issue, or just the way we have it configured?
No, it's a system issue, but we're going to look at to see if there's any codes that we don't use or are inactive for a long period of time, that maybe we can reclass to work with that. So, that's something that, you know, the chief definitely looks at that and wants it in the right place, so.
That's all, I mean, I'd just like to see us get it cleaned up this budget year, so it makes, it's apples and apples.
I think it will also help the department has the budget, too, if they see things in the right places.
Well, usually during the budget session, we do a historical anywhere, when you do spread it, when you get to see-
Right.
The differences as to, you know, we just said that much on postage and spent a little bit more on supplies, so.
My recommendation-
It does get stratified.
Yeah, we've been trying to true this up for the last couple of years, people are revisiting this issue.
We've been mitten and dyed with them to death on some of the small stuff, I mean, because it is so finite, you know, so finely defined, we can get that historical perspective on you, so if there's anything askew, because by the time you bring that in, you've trued it up anyway, that you've moved it to the-
For the most part, yes, never.
Overtime, whatever it is.
Right.
Right, you put it in the right category before you bring it to us anyway.
Right, but in the instance that you guys have, have the report, it wasn't trued up at that time.
Right, I mean, if we would ask for something today, it wouldn't-
It's, it's trued up today.
Well, it's-
Yesterday.
Three days ago, well, last Thursday, maybe not, but doesn't mean, if we'd ask for, you know, three weeks from now, it may not be trued up.
Right. That's something we do on a daily basis.
Right.
Mr. Briscoe?
I'd like to talk a little bit about conservation, because the town meeting, I think, Steve, you went out and tried to get, you got more money for the conservation. I think the town approved over nine grand for them, an additional money, but if you go look at the reports, there's like eighteen thousand dollars sitting there in their account, and they haven't been really burning any money, so we went out and got all this extra money from the taxpayers, but we're not using any money, so what's going on with conservation? We're giving eighteen thousand bucks there.
A lot of it's seasonal, too, you know, depending upon, not much going on this time of year when it comes to conservation, having site visitations and activities, it's the building season and site visitations, and what we were running into there was we ran out of money for that. ran out of money for that line item of the conservation agent, a area who was contracted, and there was just no more money. So, that applicants, whether it be the homeowner looking to put an addition on their home or put a garage in, or within so many feet of wetlands, so much of our building now is within so many feet of wetlands, which are pretty much built out of the wet areas, we're not able to accommodate the needs of the public. Historically, we were spending more than that, because, you know, we had Mary Trudeau for a number of years, employee, and then ended up contracting the services out. But a lot of it's seasonal, Michael, as far as the needs. You're not going to see the expenditures taking place from November to March.
So, you're saying, okay, so, April, May, June, July, well, April, May, June, we're going to burn up eight, they'll burn up the eighteen thousand dollars. The only reason I bring it up is we went to town meeting, we asked the taxpayers for this extra money, and I would hate that we asked for this extra money, we don't need it.
Traditionally, you know, there was a lot more building activity in town, and the fees that were charged covered the costs of the employee.
No, I understood that.
And we had a reserve in that account that we burned down to zero. So, the reserves lasted us a significant amount of time, several years before we burned it down to zero. So, now, the taxpayer, the public, has to subsidize the services because the activity level has dropped.
Yeah.
In conjunction with that, so was our expenditures.
It's also a particular department where, you know, one year can be very high, another year is a result of what's going on, could be lower, so.
Depending on the projects that come on board and come online, too, this is going to have a significant impact on the amount of time required for onsite inspections or complaints that are filed with the conservation and how many hearings have to be held. Every time someone files for a hearing with the conservation, the agent's got to do an onsite visit, so.
Question for Elizabeth. If, if you were to look at historic burn rates for different line items, is it possible to take some kind of an average burn rate by month and have a column that compares the average to what's being spent from a percentage point of view? That way, the seasonality issue would be taken care of. When you're looking at it, yeah, this particular budget, they're only at twenty-five percent at this time of the year, or they're seventy-five percent at this time of the year, and then there's nothing to worry about. It's following a path that.
You just need to keep in mind that some of the budget line original appropriations are a little different than years past, so that there could be a little stud when you're, when you're looking at it, but that's something that we.
Yeah, I'm saying bring it to average percentage.
Of what, though? Because this average percentage is.
We're looking, we're looking here at your report is percentage used, right?
And that's of the original appropriation.
Right.
So.
So, what I'm saying is have a column of what percentage is normally used in this particular month that you run the report, based on averages.
It's something like this question on the health agent, the environmental thing, where they spend most of the money upfront for mosquito control and all the rest. You know, so by December 31st, they've spent sixty percent of the budget.
And you should expect to see that.
So, what Bob's saying is, you know, historically, there would be sixty percent of the budget spent.
That way, when you're looking, when you're looking, say, okay, this line item here, fuel is at fifty-nine percent, and average typically at this time of the year, we're at fifty-nine percent. And if, if another year it's seventy, then, you know, you're looking at the past history from a percentage point of view and saying, oh, what's, something's going on here.
I don't think you could do that in MUNIS, though, right?
So, I would have to write.
It would have to be a Crystal Report.
Yeah.
Do a comparison.
That's perfectly fine.
An annual comparison.
I understand it all now. I mean, I spent a lot of time going through it, but that's, that would be fine. If you want to do it. You don't have to do it on my account.
That would just highlight other areas we're.
Just a suggestion.
Whether it be global warming is affecting us or something that's truly seasonal.
Any other questions?
Just one more. Any chance we can get the budget books, or at least the main ones for the Saturday meeting, earlier than a week before?
They are probably going to be done by Friday this week, so that would give you two weeks.
That'd be good.
This is.
It doesn't have to be all of them. I mean, just the main three would be fine.
No, we're going to have them all printed, hopefully by Friday.
If we don't want the book?
Yep. I would like to know, so we don't print them. I'm getting a lot that they want both, so, and that's fine. I just don't want to print extras if you're going to just collect that.
I'm happy with.
Just electronic.
Me, too.
I'll take the book.
All right, so a free book.
I had the book last year, and I really liked having it, even though I had the electronic.
No, I.
I guess I like the book.
Just write notes, write notes on.
Yeah, it's just a lot easier.
The point is that if I have an electronic and I have a particular budget I want to print, I can print it out.
Yeah, so I'll have both.
He just cost the town more money.
Right.
I'll pay you the bill. Just send me, I will gladly pay for it.
Ross up this time?
Great.
Nice job, Elizabeth.
Once again, very nice job.
It's a great report.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Anything else that you might need to do?
No, I think we're done.
Yeah, that's good. Good to see you, Spalley, right, Bob? The viewers is.
Long time to come.
Long time, yeah.
I was impressed. State's put a lot of thought and effort into this.
We have a lot more to do.
Nice to see you looking. Well, again.
That's Jones, yeah.
Sean.
This is Jones.
Jones, we're all trading.
I was going to bring that to you, I didn't expect you to be here.
We'll go to old and new business. Mr. O'Leary.
Well, I already talked about the DPW and the Public Safety and those other department heads. Mary Brady was many of the, bachelors of school, shelter, was in need for shelter. A lot of the school department personnel, I mean, they were just a job, and we were extremely well-prepared, or as well-prepared as we could have been, or we had to confront if we did a family job. I mean, this is a big one, we were overdue, and personnel broke down twice. We got it done, so I think we did a great job. The only other thing I'd like to bring up is, I have a little disappointment in the fact that NORCAM didn't cover the secondary school building for the public hearing.
Okay, good, great. I'm going to come to their defense, but that's.
No, you can come to their defense, but, you know, I think effort should have been made, just because we're working on 24-hour notice, and we knew there was going to be, and maybe, I just want to make sure that for whatever public hearings they're going to be, or any other anticipated meetings, whether there's going to be another joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and anybody else, school committee, secondary school bill committee, I mean, this is probably, you know, in all the years that I've been sitting here, you know, one of the single most important issues that we're facing in relation to a waterco project that's costing the taxpayers a lot of money, and we had overwhelming support for the project, and we now find ourselves somewhat short on what our needs are, and if we're going to have a well-informed public, we have to make sure that the information gets out to them. And NORCAM is certainly a vital resource that's available to us, and the rate payers' money funds it. So, I mean, I think it's an obligation to make sure that there's some staffing there to get coverage out. You know, maybe they don't have enough volunteers or enough people to do it, but they do have staff, and these meetings need to be covered. So, I would hope that going forward, they're manically notified, it's on their schedule, and they'll be there.
I will say, and like I said, I am coming to their defense. They don't need me, because I know this gentleman's going to speak on behalf of NORCAM, but I can, I can say that, and I agree with you, it should have been telecast, but NORCAM, my understanding was, was notified very last minute whether or not they were available to come telecast that public informational session. So, that's what went on. So, that's what I have to say in defense of them. It was very, very last minute that they were asked. There was reasons for that, which I don't agree with, but that's what I can say, that that's why they were unable to telecast that program. Go ahead.
No, yeah, just, just let me say, I apologize. Just, I know stuff like that, if it needs to be telecast, and if you really want it to be there, we have parameters set up where you need to let us know. It, I mean, we'd like a week advance notice, and we've been notified of the other meetings that will be coming up, which are very important, pertinent to this, or this conversation regarding the secondary school building committee, which, you know, thank you to Karen and everyone else who sent us the information ahead of time. So, we will be covering those additional meetings. And contractually, we're here to cover school committee and the selectmen meetings, which, you know, we do, and anytime there are other meetings that pop up, just let us know. I was approached, I was covering the school committee that night, I believe a production assistant with us, Chris McNeil, or Chris Resnick, covered, I think it was, yeah, it was two weeks ago, was it? It was the last school committee? Or, I'm sorry, selectmen? And I actually saw on the replay that you brought it up, which is fine, but it just with a little more notification, and even, even so, we actually got a call from your sister. I actually talked to her for a little bit, she was actually a very nice woman, and she was very understanding. And it is not just, even if we can't do it that evening, because also, you know, we have a certain amount of hours, and, you know, if someone is doing something outside of, you know, just the working hours, then we can't cover it. And someone can come in and get a camera and cover it. I mean, we're not opposed to, that's what we're there for. That's part of our, our makeup. Part of our makeup is we're a big resource to the town, and I, thank you for bringing up, I think, I agree with you, we are a big resource, and we should be, it should be tapped from every angle. And if anyone even, you know, selectmen, even I know, I didn't mean it cheekily, but if you wanted to come by and grab a camera and even just set it up and put it there, we, of course, I mean.
You wouldn't.
Yeah.
I have a hard time with a still camera.
I would be very Scorsese-like, I'm sure, just printing an angle. But, yeah, no, if, you know, just come, window, just give us a window of time, which is, except, I mean, if I were to ask you, could you, you know, come and cover something like 24 hours beforehand that you kind of were taking, you're like, oh, I didn't, you know, I didn't really know, per se, we needed to cover that. So, just, it's just that window, that's it. I mean, it's nothing, I understand where you're coming from. And we had a couple calls about it, and it was also, I feel bad for, because it was the senior community that were asking us about it, because they were, because someone couldn't make it to that, and they wanted to see it, see it happen, see the results. And, you know, we will be covering those, just to be sure, we will be covering those meetings, not necessarily out of guilt, but because we were, you know, informed of the dates and of, you know, we were, it was a request by you guys, and, yeah, we're more than happy to cover it. So, I apologize for the lengthy response, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Flory?
I, again, want to apologize for my tardiness, for my appearance tonight. I don't know if, anyway, noted it, but I was at work all weekend and gone home late tonight, so, but.
I can tell, sitting next to him.
The only thing I have is, I, again, I want to reiterate what we all said about all the, all the people who worked this past weekend, what a great job they did. And I can't stress enough, again, the, the need for patience by all residents of town. It will get done. These, you know, these DPW employees take pride in what they do, and it's just going to be a little, a little longer than, than we would like, but they'll get it done, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Masary.
A couple things. Again, thanks to our town employees that worked the weekend to make sure the town was safe to remove the snow. And for a comparison, typically, if I'm going to clean my driveway, I have a three or four-inch snowstorm, it takes less than an hour. I think I spent all day, and I'm still shoveling snow, so you put that into the reality of what the town, DPW had to go through, and is still going through to get the town back into shape. And I think the, the only way we're going to see a reasonable level of travel and everything is to hope for some warm weather this coming week, melt some of the snow. I met Friday with Elizabeth and Gene on IT, and we had one of our guys who's kind of an expert in virtual machines, Phil Bono, call in on the phone, and we reviewed the pathway that they're taking on the hardware for MUNIS. And it's a little different than what was proposed by adding a number of servers or adding one large server network, storage device, and they're going to use virtualization, so it'll be running multiple servers on one piece of hardware. And that was reviewed, questions that were asked by a fellow works for me who's kind of an expert in the area, they had all the answers, they looked into and did all the considerations, and the result, he and I left both feeling very comfortable in the path that they're on, keeping the project more or less on schedule. By the way, I left out, there's a, the, I don't remember his name, a fellow from Wilmington that's been consulting, not Wilmington, Reading, who's been going through, helping them with their, their system over there, was there, too. And I feel very comfortable, it's like they're going down the right path, even though there's a change in terms of the original thought when we passed the budget.
It's good news.
So, that's all good news. I won't be signing the bills on Thursday, I'll be out of, out of touch, so.
Good for you.
What?
Good for you.
That's all that I have.
Don't give us a thought, Bob, and don't, don't think about us.
So, one, one week a year, I shed everything off, and after what I went through today with work, just.
Ready to shut up.
Yesterday was quiet. I mean, the weekend was quiet. Today, just, and this morning was quiet, and then it all erupted, boom.
They knew you were going away.
Yeah, no, I expected a busy Monday because of the storm, but fortunately, no one in the area lost power. I mean, you know, had to be very few, if any.
Mr. Prisco.
No, I think we, as a town, dodged a real big bullet. I do. You know, the winds, the way it was and everything, I was surprised, less people were impacted, but it was great, and I thank the town administrator, I think he did a fantastic job continuing to keep us updated. And also, the, all the departments that have Facebook, it was great. I think the communication was excellent on the storm all around. School vacation starts Friday, so wish the kids a happy school vacation. President's Day is next Monday, and just to remind people that trash goes out on Wednesday because of the holiday, so don't forget. That's all I had.
I guess I can just say ditto in terms of our public safety staff and our DPW staff. Fire department had to go over and assist over in a pretty large apartment building fire over in Wilmington on, I think it was Friday evening, so we were stretched, but it was a job well done by all, and it's appreciated. That's all I have.
There's a.
There's an issue for executive session.
It works for my wife, that lives over in that apartment complex, not in the one that burned down, the one next door.
I do want to mention one thing, because I did talk to the chief today, and I had asked him if we had any, anybody injured shoveling, and he did mention that I think we actually had one individual pass away shoveling snow with a heart attack in town. I don't have any of the details, but I would just shout out to the community, you have an elderly neighbor, try to reach your hand out, especially the snow now with the rain on top of it, there's still areas to be cleaned out, try to reach out to your neighbors and help them out, because it is serious. Moving this stuff is a, it's a lot of work, it draws a lot of energy, especially if you're, you're older, even myself, I strain myself a little bit here and there, so, that's why I carry defibrillator with me.
Thank you, Mr. Prisco.
You're welcome.
Motion to go into executive session briefly.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move to enter into executive session for the purposes of collective bargaining?
Contract, no.
Litigation strategy?
Litigation strategy.
For, I'm sorry, purposes of litigation strategy. Such discussions in open session will have a detrimental impact on the town. And further, the board of selectmen will return to open session for adjournment.
Motion.
Second.
The second. The second. Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Foy.
Aye.
Mr. Missery.
Aye.
Mr. Prisco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.